I'd like to call us back to order, please.
So, as you're all aware, we are in the process of reviewing the policy manual. And it's just a point of information, the policy manual belongs to the Board. We're doing an initial staff review of those policies. And our Board Attorney is checking them for conformity with the law. But in a past workshop, we discussed Board members being responsible for at least working with the staff member and kind of owning that policy. And then determining whether it needs to come to the Board for revision or whether it can stand, assuming that nothing came up on the legal side of it. So, as you look at our policies, there are nine chapters. It's not as simple as everyone taking a couple chapters because some chapters are as simple as two policies that make up that chapter and others, there may be as many as 100. And so, there are about 320 individual policies. And if you put that in the context, our Board Attorney agreed to review all of our policies at a flat rate, which he may want to renegotiate, but no take backs. And so, our thought was, in discussing with the Chair, is that we distribute this to you. You can see that we have assigned either myself or one of the three Assistant Superintendents to own the policy and that they would work with a Board Member. So, doing the math, I need for you to sign up for 65, 70 policies that you would like to be involved with, if it's a particular area of interest. And then, the Chair would have to resolve that if more than one of you wanted to work on any particular policy. So, those that you're particularly interested in, and obviously, this is not something that's going to happen here at the table today.
Shouldn't we go by chapter rather than taking one piece out of the chapter?
You can't. That's what...
Well, what we found is, as an example, some things fall underneath operations and other things finance. We tried to do that at the Assistant Superintendent level, but you'll see that in some chapters, there's curriculum, there's operations, and there's finance, all within the same chapter. But if you chose just to say, "I'll take Chapter 2," that's up to you. What I need as a final product is a Board Member contact for each of these policies.
Is this something we would adopt in a formal capacity? Because I'm wondering if, just for sake of time, if that's something we can mark off and send over? And then you, to discuss that, if that works for you? Or did you see a different process?
Well, I have no visions that it would happen today. But we would set some arbitrary deadline by Friday or whatever, and then next week, Caroline and I could sit and fill it in and resolve any...
You said how many there?
65, 70 of them.
Okay, but you can't just, you have to discuss it. Because Eric, you can't just sit there and take all what you want to take.
Why would I put down ones I didn't want to take?
Well, unfortunately, you're going to have to take good and bad. It doesn't matter. So...
Well, at some point, you're going to have to make some assignments. I doubt anybody's going to volunteer for the table of contents.
I'm going to take Chapter 9. Okay?
All right. I'll do Chapter 2.
I'd like to take Chapter 7.
I'll do 8.
The audit stuff.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Shirley? What do you want, Shirley?
I'll do Chapter 2.
2. Bridgette?
I'll do 8.
8.
And you're doing 7, Eric?
Yeah.
Eric, you're a 7?
Yeah.
That works. Now, wait. I need to get some input from Jane.
I'll do 5.
I could do 6. 12. Yeah, 6.
And I'll do whatever ones else besides that.
I'll do 2 and 3.
So, 6 and 8 for me.
Shirley, 2 and 3.
Or 2 and 4.
2 and 4.
If I'm taking anyone that someone wants, you just speak up and let me know.
2 and 4. Okay. 5 is taken.
6 is crazy.
Yeah, but I can, that's my...
All right. Who's got 5? Jane?
I'll split some of 6 with people because it's so long.
Well, should I take one?
I don't care.
Let me, I have it and I'll go through it. Maybe if I cut some off.
Yeah.
7's pretty robust, too.
It's taken.
You've got Caroline, you've got, who's got 8?
I do. I've, I've, I've got 9. I have a last one.
9.
Yeah, I have 9. That's a short one.
That is a short one. But I'm fine with 8 and 6.
Nobody took the easy way and said number 1, then only has 2 policies on it.
You're doing 6 and 8?
Yeah, and then I can, if I go through, it's more depth, if I want to section it off.
One person can't do 6.
Or maybe I just do 6 and then somebody else do.
Yeah, because 6 is a monster.
6 is 2.
Okay. So, what are you, what are you doing now, Bridgette?
But they're all kind of in line. That's why it would be...
Yeah. You want to do 6, that's fine.
I'll do 6, and then maybe you can do 8 and 9 to kind of balance it out.
I think if you do 6, that's a, I mean, that's...
Yeah, you're right.
All right. I'll do 8 and 9.
There was that other one that... You're going to do 8 and 9?
Yeah. I do want 8, though.
You want to do 3 and 5? Do me? Sure, whatever. I'm not doing 2 and 4. I mean, I'll do, I'll do 2 and 3 if you want, but I'll do, I'll do 2 and 3 and you can do 3, 4 and 5.
I'm like, I really, 8's really on my...
Madam Chair, I'll do any other ones besides 7 that you want me to do.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Shirley, what would you have?
Shirley is 2 and 3. Jane is 4 and 5.
I got Jane.
Bridgette, 6.
Got that.
Eric, 7.
Got that.
You're 8 and 9.
And that doesn't, you're just owning it.
Well, I think the Chair, the mission...
We should all do.
...to work on together, aren't we?
Yeah.
The mission and the vision?
Yeah.
I think we need new missions and new visions, don't we? Yeah. I think we're... Short and sweet, one sentence?
Why don't you take that as Chair?
You don't want...
We'll work on it together.
I'm going to take 1.
Oh, we're not going to do that as a team?
Well, I'm going to work with...
Okay.
Well, many of those are going to end up back in front of you. Anything that has a change on it will be before you multiple times.
And that's what I was going to say, it's just owning it to make sure that we're crossing, the T-dotting the I or what have you.
So, we got it?
Expertise can be garnered.
I'll take something.
So, when do you want us to start doing this? Not yet?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Okay.
I know, you'll have it done by tomorrow night.
Well, don't we have to meet with people to go over them?
Nah, that's...
Do I need to meet with you, Art?
Art has done entire chapters.
You should sit down, Art, tell us your...
But they're still with staff. Not all of them have gone through. They've...
What has been happening so far, at least, is that I've taken a first pass at some. I mean, there's still a lot to go, or at the beginning of the process, not the end. I've taken a first stab. I have set meetings with the various administrator, whether it's Todd or one of the assistants, and go through some of them in each chapter. And we're through just a couple of chapters and have a couple more meetings set later this week. And then, I think that Todd, or Laura, or Scott, or Mitzi are then also either bringing in some of their staff or speaking with their staff to look at things as well. I think then, I will get a draft together based on those conversations. And then, that administrator, Todd, or the assistant, will meet with whoever of you are the chapter proponents to sit down. And then, I think what's going to happen is, you're going to make an initial decision whether it's something that needs to be workshopped, whether it's something that is a minor change that can just show up on a Board Agenda. And of course, things show up first for advertising.
Right.
Anyway, or whether no change needs to be made at all. And there are a lot of ones that are just really minor changes because it's been, for some of them, a number of years. And some of them, you know, cite to statutes that no longer exist or have been renumbered, et cetera. So, I think that's the process. So, I think you all, now having made your own assignments, now need to wait until you hear from Todd or one of the Assistant Superintendents to schedule a meeting to look at the chapter or portions of the chapter because some of them are pretty long.
I'm not sure. You know, we've got these policy books back in the office, but they haven't been kept up. Because they said, "Why do it?" Because it's all online. Does anybody want theirs, else want theirs printed out so they can mark on it or not? You just want to look online? Okay.
No more, no more binders. Eric, that's not a big one you took.
That's what I said, I'll do other ones.
Okay. It's all assigned.
I know, I had offered to help.
With 6?
It was 6.
If I take part of 8? I think we're good on the framework and then we...
You took 6.
I did.
But I just, I just thought...
I have 8 and 9 and 1.
So...
Did you want to, maybe then, do you want to do 8?
No.
No. No, he can, he can help you on 6 if you need.
I can help you with whatever.
I think we're okay. Yeah, I think we're good from a starting point.
I'm leaving JFCS the end of next week.
Correct.
I will not have a second job.
But we can all look at what's happening or what's changing or whatever thing.
Sure.
We can easily look at and say, "Oh, by the way..." You know, like if, if I'm looking at, "Oh, staff gifts and solicitations, oh, I want some input on that." And I go, "Oh, I'll look to see what it is." If I have some comment, I would pass that comment on to Bridgette or Scott Lempy or Art.
Don't pass it on to Bridgette. Pass it on to Scott or to me.
Oh, Scott, okay.
I think it's just to hold in one member of the Board accountable for said section, but doesn't mean you're only the one drafting it because all of which would come before us.
Sure. I mean, no change can be made except that through the Board. So, this is, this is just to try to streamline the process a little bit.
So, if we have comments to make on any of these, if there's one thing that I want to look at, I can look at it. And if I have comments, I pass it on to the staff contact person.
I think that'd be the best person and, or you can send it to me, but the staff contact person's...
Well, I'll CC it to you.
Perfect. One of the, one of the staff contact people had something to say.
I just want to make sure we're clear. He's going through the legal work first. So, I don't think you need to be looking at it quite yet. We're not looking at it until we get the first draft from Art.
Compliance language first.
He's going right to the law and making sure it aligns with the law. It was a nice thing for me to realize that I didn't have to do the first draft.
I want to do that one. I can't find it.
Is it possible to get this email to us? This document?
In an Excel spreadsheet?
An Excel spreadsheet?
Editable.
I will fill in your selections and send it out to you.
And...
Yes. So, you know who the staff contacts are.
Not mail, but...
On the agenda.
Email.
Policy that challenges next.
Can I remind Lotus 1, 2, 3?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead. Your next.
You know what that is?
Okay. So, there are some policies which obviously will need to be workshopped, and this is one of them that we could immediately flag. You also have on your next workshop Agenda 7.71, which relates to construction. So, there's no need to get to the point where we're doing all of Chapter 7. So, one of those ones that we flagged that needed some immediate attention is 4.30, challenged materials. And I know Art has done some work on that. And so, I'm going to turn it over. Sure. So, whoever among you just chose Chapter 4, you're going to have one removed from your Last year, in the legislative session, the Legislature made some changes to a couple of statutes, primarily 1,006.28, that has to do with citizen challenges to instructional materials. So, I have worked on rewriting your policy, Chapter 4.30. I've worked with Laura and others in this as well. And basically, we've tried to track the language of the statute. There are two primary challenges that are recognized in the statute. One is when the Board adopts instructional materials. The Legislature allows citizens to make a challenge within 30 days of adoption. And that's the, that's the newest part of the law that talks about having to have a hearing officer, an independent hearing officer. The second type of challenge that can happen is also a challenge to instructional materials, but it's to the use of instructional materials. So, it's not necessarily tied to the adoption. It could be something that was adopted 2 years ago, and a citizen can challenge the use. And that is not with a hearing officer, that's just through another process. And that's largely the process we've already had in our rule or in our policy. Both have as the last step, the school, a school board determination, assuming that the issue can't be worked out before then, the school board ultimately makes the decision.
We're solely talking about something that we would physically buy. We're not talking about a teacher who's having the students critique the Quran and somebody's upset that they're using the Quran.
Correct. This is, this is instructional materials that you have purchased and adopted.
Okay.
Adopted.
Thank you.
Right. And the difference between adoption and use is one of timing, really. So, you adopt today some instructional material, then the clock starts ticking, people have 30 days to bring a challenge to that adoption. And that's the first part of this challenge materials policy. If somebody decides that they don't like a previously adopted instructional material that's being used somewhere, may have been adopted a year or 2 or 3 years ago, they can challenge that. That's not through a hearing officer process, but through the process, pretty much that's been in place historically with, with a couple of changes. So, just looking at this quickly, and I don't know how much detail people want to go into, but it's, this is pretty much taken from the statute. But the first change is, it's not just a parent of a student who has the ability to challenge, but it's a resident as well of the county. And if you're challenging, if that person is challenging the adoption, they have 30 calendar days, that's in the statute, to bring their challenge. There has to be appointed a unbiased and qualified hearing officer to conduct an open public hearing. We put in some timeframe because there weren't timeframes in the statute, but it seemed like that was necessary. The hearing officer will conduct a hearing. The hearing officer will present his or her recommendations to the Board. And again, we've put in some timeframes for that, so this doesn't just go on forever. And then, the, the end of the process is the Board receiving the hearing officer's findings and recommendation and making a decision on the challenge. So, that's under Roman numeral 1. Under Roman numeral 2, it's the second kind of challenge we talked about, it's the use challenge. And this is primarily using the process that's already been in place. The statute doesn't talk about hearing officer in this case. It doesn't really talk about the process, other than saying the Board has to ultimately, the individual has to be given the opportunity to proffer evidence to the Board, and the Board makes a decision. So, we have left in place, pretty much, the process that had always been there, which involves going to the principal, talking to the principal. If it can't be resolved there, then going to a school-level committee that reviews the challenge. If that is not worked out satisfactorily to the complainant, then it goes to a district-level committee. Again, if that's not satisfactorily worked out, then it comes to the school board to make a final decision. That would give you all the benefit of seeing what the, what the school and district-level committees have to say about this as well before, so it gives you a basis in some, some ways, similar to a hearing officer's recommendation. So, you're not just doing it out of whole cloth. So, you've got some basis upon which to make your decision. So, we tried to put in some, again, some timeframes so that the process, I mean, the process will take a while, but, so that it won't unnecessarily drag on. Yes?
So, does this mean that a person could possibly have 2 chances to object to the same book? Like at the, first, they could object to the adoption of the book? And then, if the book is adopted, then they could object to how it's being used?
Theoretically, yes.
Thank you. So, I just went from clarification standpoint since, as we talk about timeline, and I know you had mentioned, the statute does not articulate specifically that timeline. So, we drafted the 30-day...
Well, the...
And numeral uno, uh, numeral, numeral uno, 1C is what I'm talking about. Within 30 days after the 30-day period has expired.
The statute, I'm going back to it right now on the adoption, says the timeframe that's in there is that the complainant within 30 calendar day, has to file a petition within 30 calendar days. And then, within 30 days after the 30-day period has expired, the school board must conduct the hearing before an unbiased hearing officer. So, you have 2 timeframes in the statute. One is the statute of limitation, so to speak. A person has 30 days to bring their complaint.
Right.
And then, the hearing officer has to conduct the hearing within, in essence, 60 days. Within 30 days after the 30 days has expired.
Okay.
Then, it talks about the school board making a final decision. It doesn't have a timeframe for that in the statute.
Okay. That's where I was, right?
Yeah, we put, we put a timeframe in. And under F, we say, within 30 days after the school board receives the hearing officer's findings and recommendation, you all will have a public hearing to come up with your conclusion.
Yeah.
So...
Sorry.
It can't take more than 90 days.
Okay.
Eric?
I'm just asking this question, would it be simpler or would it be more complex if we just use the same process for both, having the hearing officer for both processes, instead of having to go through all those different layers of review?
Well, I mean, that's a, that's a decision that, that the Board can make.
I'm only mentioning it for simplistic reasons.
Right. Well, the use lang, the use challenge does not have to have a hearing officer.
I understand.
Getting hearing officers, whether you're, however you're doing that, is obviously you're imposing on people to do that.
I'm just afraid of them going to the principal, going to a school base, going to a district base. I mean, using up a lot of staff time of them, "No, okay, you know, I object. I strongly object. I really strongly object." It's like, how many layers of committees are these people going to go through when we could just do the hearing officer and be done with it? And I'm just saying for simplistic reasons.
I will tell you, probably the simplest solution is when it goes to the principal because often, they are able to resolve it. It's only in extreme cases that it would ever even come to you to play the role of hearing officer.
I'm just saying for simplistic reasons.
Bridgette? And for clarification, and you had mentioned this earlier, is for the first part, it is in regards to adopted textbooks or curriculum, not supplement, like supplement documents. So, if we're talking about required reading...
All of this goes to instructional materials.
So, any?
Well, instructional materials are defined...
Correct.
Instructional materials are a defined term. So, it's not necessarily anything a student may read. They're things that the Board adopts or, under this policy, are in the media center.
Okay. That's, thank you.
Shirley?
I mean, could someone just go through, I mean, like, you know, they'll go through and they, you know, I remember the book burning things, and just go through a list, "Oh, we don't want, oh, like, we don't want any of the Harry Potter books in your library." But if they were just there for reading and it's not part of an assignment, could they challenge that, too? Or...
Well, the policy, the draft policy, now we're talking about use.
Use.
The use talks about if they object to the use of a specific instructional material or materials accessed in the school media center. So, not something on, you know, the 7th grade language arts teacher shelf, but if there's something in the media center, this policy would allow them to challenge the use of that.
But if a teacher had a bookcase in her room, like I understand the one at Brookside did, where she had books that the kids could check out, that one...
That would not come under this policy because that wouldn't meet the definition of an instructional material. Instructional material, by the way, is defined statutorily. Instructional materials means items having intellectual content that by design serve as a major tool for assisting in the instruction of a subject or course. So, clearly, I mean, textbook is obviously the, the major one. But if there was assigned reading, like a textbook is assigned, everyone must do a report on whatever, then, then that, then, then that would be certainly an instructional material as well. But if it's just something that someone could go, you know, could take off the shelf and read, that's not under this policy.
Bridgette? So, as I read through this policy, and I'm just to get a sense of timeline and how much we're workshopping, I know the biggest area or topic of discussion was defining the hearing officer and what parameters would be around that. Is that an accurate statement of those? I mean, because that's our next step, is defining what the hearing officer is in fact or what those requirements or parameters are. So...
Well, under, under this proposal, the, I mean, the hearing officer is basically undefined in the statute, other than to say, the person has to be...
Correct.
...unbiased and they can't be, they're unbiased and qualified, and they may not be an employee or agent of the school district.
Correct. So, to my point, as Sarah, so to, a school board from a policy level, I, and I think we touched on this before, I, my personal opinion would be, behooves to draft what that looks like in advance versus waiting upon any kind of challenge.
Well, it depends who, how you want to deal with that. This draft says, "The hearing officer shall be appointed by the superintendent and shall be neither an employee nor agent of the school board." So, the rationale under this was, the superintendent would select the hearing officer. If the Board wants to select the hearing officer, then we need to change this language and, and perhaps put some... and, and perhaps put some, you know, put some parameters around it. That's, that's your choice. My thought was, regardless, when a person is appointed, they're gonna, you know, they've, by definition, will have never done this before, this is new. And then I work, will work with Laura and others to try to give them some guidance, just generically, on what should happen during the hearing, because they, you know, it's one thing if you have a lawyer, it's another thing if you don't have a lawyer, you know, what is giving people due process mean? And it's not gonna be, obviously, like in a court of law, but just giving people the opportunity to speak their, speak their piece, to deliver whatever kind of documentary evidence, if there's anything other than the reading itself, the book itself. And then also, having the opportunity for the staff to say what this is about and why they're doing, you know, why they believe this is appropriate, you know, so both sides are heard, and then the hearing officer will come up with his or her recommendation, which the board is then free to accept or reject. It's just designed to give you more information than just being hit with everything from the podium.
So we talked about, we talked about coming up with some guidelines that will be laid out and shared.
Just kind of procedurally, just here, congratulations, you're the hearing officer, this is what it means, and, and some timeframes. So, you know, this is, I guess, our first case of going through policies, and this one frankly is a much more involved revision than probably 95% of what you're going to see as you go through the other ones. As, as the superintendent said, didn't need to talk with the person, whoever that was gonna be, who was assigned to chapter four, to know this needed to be workshopped. So we're here, I think the point of this exercise is, if the board is comfortable with this as it's written, then it can go on a board agenda for advertisement, you know, and get into the process. And this one will be done faster than some of the other ones, because in case it comes up, we will have a policy in place. If the board wants to make some changes before we put it out there for advertising, this would be the time to, you know, to talk about that. You can always make changes after advertising, but then you have to start the advertising cycle over again. So it's better, if you can, not always possible, but better if you can advertise what you really would like to adopt, you know, pending, of course, other people weighing in. But, you know, it's just faster to do it that way, so if people have issues that they want to see changed, now's the time, or now is a time at least. If not, we can put this on an agenda to send it out to be advertised, and then there'll be more time for people to comment, or for you all to think about it as well.
I'm fine with what you presented. I'm losing my voice.
I, I guess I'm fine too, I know, I know Ms. Ziegler sounded like she wanted to put qualifications for the hearing officer, but I trust Dr. Bowden's judgment. My only thing is, make sure he's cognizant of, you might want to have somebody in your, thinking about it ahead of time, because if somebody says it, and they have 30 days, and so it takes you two weeks to find somebody, and he says, okay, you got the job, and this is brand new, never been done, you got, in two weeks you're gonna be hearing, hearing officer.
Right.
That's probably not the optimal thing, so it'd be good if, I'm sure you are doing this, but...
Yes.
You have somebody, you know, in your mind ahead of time, so...
Yes, we've already, we've already started to kind of throw some names around and figure out kind of...
And I don't know if that's required any type of training by that person, I mean, I just don't know. I just don't want that person to be thrown to the wolves and playing catch-up, because that'd be embarrassing for the district.
Right, and we do have tight timelines, so that's...
Right, so I just, I just don't want it to be embarrassing.
Okay. So in the absence of further comment, this will be on your agenda in November, requesting for us to advertise. Okay?
Right.
That's when you'll see it again.
Next is a discussion on a new board chair and a vice chair. Eric?
I, I think Bridget should be the next chair. She's vice chair now, following tradition, that she chaired the May meeting when you weren't here, I thought she did a good job, and out of any reason, why not to follow tradition and, and move off to chair?
Well, I have a concern, and the concern is that what we have coming up next year, I know the referendum takes up a lot of time, and I, I know that you have to really be out there, and I would like Jane to run the referendum, I'd like Jane to be chair, and for Bridget to be vice chair, and to be chair the next year, after we get through the referendum.
And I, and I, I would say that I would like to see the support of this board and follow protocol. I think that if we look back to even the discussion we had on Friday, and really focusing on working together, I mean, that was the whole genesis of the master board training, and I would feel very competent in a lot of, in the historical nature of what I've chosen to do up here and work together, so I believe I've, I've illustrated the competence around that and being supportive of this district, so that's...
The protocol is open, Eric. One time, the vice, the chair, he kept the chair for two years, and another time was Franco Retsch's turn, and some, and I think Shirley took over, and Shirley was putting...
Two years in the house.
Yeah.
We're not, Caroline's continuing on.
No, we're not.
No, we're not.
No.
And...
Only because I don't want to, Eric.
Okay, that's fine.
No, I'm looking at you, and I'm reading your face. Never mind. I'm Bridget.
And again, even for members of the public, this is not something we're taking action on today, this is, it's just, I think traditionally, we've discussed it in advance, so know that I am hoping and would like the support to be chair, but to each their own when the vote comes up in November.
The vote will be on November 22nd.
I think it'd be a very step backwards to our board to overlook Bridget. I think Bridget has done a fine job into, and to basically say that you can't, you know, you're not ready to be a board after four years, I just think that that's, that is a step backwards from us trying to be master board training, us trying to work together. I mean, you should never have made a vice chair if you weren't willing to make her chair. And we knew about the referendum four years ago. You should never have dangled that in front of her, that's just not fair to Bridget, it's not right, it's not treating her with the respect that she deserves.
Yes, can I, let me...
And it's not treating her with the respect that she deserves, and it's going to cause our board to have more dissension, which we don't need. I think we're trying to, you know, have training, trying to come together, and to, to basically, I don't even know why you would say she wouldn't have enough time, we are all...
I didn't say she didn't have enough time, I just said that it's very time-consuming. I was purposely careful not to say she didn't have enough time.
But I, I'm sure all of us have managed our duties as school board, I think all of us take it very seriously, and we all take the, being the chair very seriously. And so, I think that, that she has said that she could have, she could manage her time well enough, and I take her at word.
I just have concern with the referendum coming up. I'm really not sure where you stand on it, because the last meeting, and forgive me, I talk really straight, the last meeting, you tried to sabotage it by wanting to move it to the general election. So, I mean, I, I don't have the trust, I know I'll probably be outvoted, but I don't have the trust, and I'm not going to hide how I feel. I mean, that referendum means the world to us as a district, and I would rather put it in someone's hands that I know that has handled it twice before with fantastic results.
You know, we did have a workshop on Friday, and I thought we made some great progress on Friday. I'd like to see us continue that, you know, and I think perhaps Bridget can think, because there, there are a lot of extra requests on the time, but there's, there's nothing that would prevent even, say, the vice chair from stepping in and speaking up, I think, because we all will be working, I would think, we'll all be working on the referendum. And, and I think, didn't the referendum vote, did it pass 5-0, or was it 4-1?
Nobody sabotaged it, we all support the referendum 5-0.
Yes, it was a 3-2, and then you all changed to make it 5.
Nobody voted against the referendum, all of us here strongly support the referendum. That had nothing to do with anybody sabotaging the referendum, and I take offense at that, that's not even being truthful, honest, that, that is a, an attack by saying that someone sabotaged, that's a negative word, we need to get off this negative and personal attacks. I, I believe that, I, I was one of the three, I wanted to put in November election, but I can tell you this much, I, I have funded the referendum, I have debated on the referendum, I have supported the referendum, but that has got nothing to do with the fact, fact that I want it to be in November. I, I will be out there talking for the referendum, I, I've talked about maybe having an own PAC to raise money to support the referendum. Me wanting in November has, to characterize that as sabotaging the referendum is so far from the truth, so far from being honest, to say that is just so offensive. I support the referendum, I supported it long, long before I got on the school board, and I'm gonna support it long, long in the future. I know firsthand, so don't say that I'm trying, someone's trying to sabotage the referendum.
A lot of people out there in the community are saying that.
Well, they can say whatever they want, that doesn't make it true. That doesn't make it true, and you shouldn't, you shouldn't throw disparaging remarks about your fellow school board members.
Eric, everything with you becomes disparaging remarks.
You're saying that someone's trying to sabotage the referendum.
I'd be so glad not to be chair. This is the worst year in my entire life, of 20 years on the school board, this year has been the worst year.
Don't, don't say people trying to sabotage the school...
Thank you very much for having a group.
Don't use the word sabotage.
I will use whatever words I want to use.
That's divisive.
If, if I may.
Call it as you will.
That's being honest, you're talking about, wanna be honest and direct, I'm being honest and direct back to you.
You always are, you're always picking on me.
I'm picking, you're the one that's sabotaging her.
Can we call that, this, you know, you know, we, we talked about on Friday, we talked about drawing a line, and putting the past in the past. And now, and people calling names, and then there was an article in the yesterday's paper that said, you know, there were gadflies out in the public that called our afternoon meetings secret meetings. I don't know who those gadflies were, just like, you know, that talked to some people, just like Caroline has some people that she's talked to that might have had some concerns. But I think we need to tell those people, whoever those gadflies are, that think we wanted secret meetings, or whoever it is that's saying, I don't know, that she'll do this, that we have all agreed to, and I don't know, have you gotten the written ones yet that, that Carol sent, on what we agreed to? There was like five issues that we agreed to, but one of them was, we were drawing a line in the sand, we were gonna put some things behind us, and we were gonna try to work together moving forward. And I, and I, and I know it's, we've made some steps there. Friday was, I thought was a good day, and we've made some steps, and I, and you called me, and you said you enjoyed it, and that you might even be going to the next FSBA meeting. I think we need to keep going in that direction, and, and maybe, maybe there's something that, you know, Bridget can say to you at some point, that'll show that she does support the referendum, help you understand that more, I don't know what it's gonna take, but I really, really want to move forward. That, that meeting on Friday, I think we made some steps forward, and I, and I don't want to go back. I do not want to go back to the fighting at the board meetings, by, any side.
I agree.
Any side.
I agree.
By, you know, we don't need, people hyper upset about what a comment is said, but I think we need to be careful of what those comments are, because I didn't like being told that gadfly said we had secret meetings in the paper yesterday, and I, and, and I know there are some people that, you know, aren't always, you know, especially when the paper calls the two conservatives versus the, the three moderate, and then they go, Shirley Brown, the moderate, you know, who the hell says that, you know? But it's, you know, those are the kinds of things, we have got to put that aside, we have got to put away the conservative versus the moderate, we need to work together, I think you saw that FSBA is not the enemy, we all, you see what our agendas are, we've got a lot of things in common, and, and the kids in the school. Does this help the kids in the school?
Nope. Bridget?
I wholeheartedly agree with Shirley, I appreciate her comments, and I think that is why I said, we don't take the position today, let's steer clear of the emotional components, but I think the behavior that we bestow is much more detrimental in the long run than anything else. So, I, you know, I think that, we'll just leave it there.
See, since I didn't attack Bridget, I was very careful with what I said, therefore, your attack on me is not necessary. I, I will vote the way I want to vote, and, and you can't try to intimidate me.
I'm not intimidating you.
You can't try to intimidate.
I'm not trying to intimidate, you're free to vote however you want, I'm free to vote however I want.
Absolutely.
Like Jane had a...
Hello.
Hello. I just, you know, I, I want us to go forward as well, and I think we will, I think we will go forward, I think this will all turn out to be a good thing. And no matter what I do, or where I am, I will be out working on the referendum, full force, trying to make sure that it's passed, because I'm very passionate about it, and because I think I have the ability to work on that, like nobody else on the board has ever done.
I agree.
So, that's, that's, that's neither here nor there, and that, and we'll all decide that in November. I wanted to bring some attention to a couple of other things before we close, and we should be closing now. Suncoast Technical College has a new collateral piece that's out about the classes they'll be offering. I was real excited, they're going to offer some ACE courses, which I keep trying to take, but never have the time, and they're also gonna offer a lot of career and technical, they're gonna do accounting, Eric, administrative business management, emergency medical nursing, practical nursing, nursing assistant, but the one thing that they're gonna offer that I think is gonna be really big in that community is carpentry. And, you know, we don't have that carpentry course here on the main campus, and we have a lot more electrical, and a lot more, and better facilities there than we've had up here, because we learned from up here what we were deficient in, so the labs and the classrooms, I mean, the culinary arts department is like amazing, I mean, can you imagine cooking on those, on those Vulcan stoves and, and so forth? So, I just want to encourage everybody that is listening, or is able to, in Northport, to go out and take a course, because the school actually opened up today.
This morning.
But, you know, sign up for a course, it's, it's a beautiful building, gorgeous conference center, fabulous bookstore, and the library is chartreuse purple and turquoise, so it's really great.
I'd like to add a question, follow up on that. I thought we had a carpentry class, but it was in Newtown, do we have a carpentry?
No, we did an introduction to construction, it was an overview of all the trades, we did that in support of the rebuild of Booker High School, but we've not had anything for adults. Now, on the campus of Booker High School, they had a construction trades, which was carpentry-based until two years ago. But as far as, as an adult offering carpentry, obviously there was a hole in our offerings, and so as we were looking at what programs we would offer down in Northport, we knew from a space allocation, we'd have two industrial-type programs. Carpentry seemed a natural fit, because we didn't offer carpentry anywhere else in the district currently, and particularly in Northport, they have two rather large carpentry cabinet building companies down there in the Adams Group and Busy V Cabinets, so there was a natural partnership there. The other industrial program, while we're plugging the industrial programs of the Northport campus, is industrial maintenance, which is across all of the trades, and those kind of jack-of-all trades that, that keep manufacturing facilities up and running, so those are the two programs, both complement our offerings at the main campus, and also do not compete directly with Charlotte Technical.
The classes have started today, but isn't there an official opening?
November 7th.
November 7th, we'll do a ribbon cutting, and that's the day the library opens, but today being the first day of the second nine weeks, the campus is open to students as of 7 o'clock this morning.
And I've invited Charlotte County Board members to attend that opening.
Eric?
What I wanted to say was that, I can, I can speak to the accounting program, that I was also on the Board of Trustees of SEF, and so I thought, while I'm on the Board of Trustee of SEF, I need to be a good SEF trustee and go hire people from the accounting program. And, sorry President Popefield, but it wasn't until I got to the SETI graduates that I saw that SETI, SEF teaches people theory, and they teach people, they do a wonderful job on channeling people to go get a four-year accounting degree, eh? But if you want somebody to hit the road running, who's actually, you know, filled out tax returns, actually done, you know, sample companies, I mean, SETI, when they graduate those, those people, not only they... graduate those, those people, not only are they certified in industry certifications, but they actually have real-world experience, that you could sit them down at the desk with, 'cause I'm, I'm here, so I don't have time to train my staff, and they are going to work.
Okay, repeat after me. Suncoast?
Suncoast, what did I say?
Technical?
Technical.
College.
College, what did I say?
Think of it this way.
SETI, is it not SETI?
No.
Todd, I mean, Eric, Eric, think of it this way, now that Todd has left, SETI, there is no I in Suncoast Technical College.
Oh, SCT.
The I is actually in our shared conference room, if you're looking for it.
I think the thing that Jade said was good.
Fabulous.
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 Fabulous. I'm sorry for getting the name wrong.
Swirling lights?
Is there anything else? Nope. We will convene again for our regular meeting at 3.
I am a smoking...